Welcome to the September 20th, 2017 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. At this time, I have a request that you turn off your cell phones and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Applications heard tonight during tonight's meeting will be voted on by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Commission will then make a recommendation on the applications, which will be submitted to the St. Charles County Council for their final decision. The individual items and bills for this evening's applications are scheduled to be introduced at the Tuesday, October 10th, 2017 County Council meeting. Applications for preliminary plat heard during tonight's meeting will also be voted on by the Planning and Zoning Commission during the meeting. The vote on preliminary plats is final. Only a recommendation for denial of a preliminary plat would be heard before the County Council. The following documents are introduced as a matter of record for this evening's public hearing and regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Unified Development Ordinance of St. Charles County, including zoning maps, the Year 2025 Master Plan for St. Charles County, which includes the Year 2025 Future Land Use Plan map. So I'm going to give you a little roadmap of how this goes tonight. What we normally do is we read the application into the record, and we then ask staff for some recommendations. The Commission then has an opportunity to ask staff questions. When we're done with that portion of it, we ask the applicant to come before us, come up to the podium and present their application to us. Once they've done that and we've asked questions of them, we close that portion of it. We then open it up to the public to speak for or against. If you're going to talk tonight, make sure you fill out a speaker's card. Once we've gone through that portion, the public comment portion, the applicant has an opportunity to come back before us and answer any of the questions or concerns that people might have with their application or their conditional use permits. At that point, we go ahead and close the meeting, that application, and we bring it back to the Commission. There's discussion for or not, and then we take a vote on that application. So if you do come up and speak, try to keep it to three to four minutes if you can. I don't see a whole lot of people, so the meeting shouldn't go too long, but from time to time, you're going to be saying the same things over and over. If it's the same thing, you know, just keep that in mind, too. So with that, we're going to go ahead and get started. I need a motion to open the meeting.
So moved.
Home in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, rezoning R-17-10 and preliminary plat 1709. The applicant is St. Charles Engineering and Surveying Incorporated. Owner is Titan Real Property Developers LLC. The developer is M.H. Thornton Homes LLC. The current zoning is A agricultural district, five acre minimum lot size. Requested zoning is R-1D, single-family residential district, 10,000 square foot minimum lot size. The area is five acres, the number of lots is 15, and it's on the south side of Orf Road, approximately 350 feet west of Eagle Estates Drive, and it's in Council District 2. Staff?
All right. On this rezoning request, it is for rezoning from agricultural district to R-1D, which is residential, 10,000 square foot minimum lot size. They're asking for the rezoning with the intent of plating a subdivision of 15 homes. Staff did look at surrounding property to the east. You'll see Eagle Estates, and to the south, there is a development that is in the city of Lake St. Louis. All are similar lot sizes. Staff also reviewed the master plan with the land use designation for this area, a low-density residential, which is one to four units per acre, so that it is the intent of development in this area. Staff has reviewed the zoning requests, and we are recommending approval. As I mentioned, there is a preliminary plat that we can go into next if you'd like, or we can wait until the end of the process and do preliminary plats as we usually do. But the rezoning request does meet the land use designation for the master plan, and also it is similar to surrounding properties, so we are recommending approval.
So just so the Commission knows, we have two votes on this item. One is for the rezoning, and one is for the preliminary plat, and they'll be separate on it. And she's talking about going right into the preliminary plat right now. I mean, what do you? I mean, I'm going to ask you.
I can show you the plat if you'd like. It's up to you.
I mean, you might as well.
All right. The plat, I guess we don't have anything up. Can we switch over?
Can you guys switch it over to preliminary plat back there? Thank you.
Okay. It's kind of hard to see on.
Yeah. Yeah, we got it up here.
But it is 15 lots on this five-acre parcel. We do have a few comments, primarily before the plat can be, you can approve it subject to the rezoning approval in council. Also, we are working with them. They will be submitting a tree preservation substitute plan because they will be clearing a lot of trees out, but they will put that notation on the revised preliminary plat, subject to your approval. We do have a letter that went out to the engineering firm, where we do mention the tree replacement. They are aware of that. Just a few other small comments that are just housekeeping comments. Otherwise, the only major thing is that we will ask for the tree preservation on there.
Were there any letters on this?
We have no letters.
Okay. All right. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and ask the applicant if they want to come up and present it. Raise your right hand for me. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
And state your name and address for the record.
Matt Thornton.
Mike Myers, St. Charles Engineering, 801 South Fifth Street.
And Matt, your address?
With M.H. Thornton Homes. And my address, 928 Mark Drive, Wentzville, Missouri.
Okay. Go ahead, guys.
Matt approached us about this five-acre parcel. This is zoned currently agricultural. As was mentioned, we're proposing to rezone it to R-1D with the intent to build 15 80-foot wide front lots that are going to be 10,000 square foot minimum. The adjacent subdivision was recently platted, very similar lot size. Mason Glen is pretty much the same. Roals is building back in Brookfield Crossing, very similar lot sizes and homes. The actual homes proposed, I'll let Matt address that a little bit, but I'm understanding that some, the adjacent builder may even be considering going in there, so.
Yeah, the adjacent building is Thomas, Steve Thomas. He's actually, him and I are in communication, but him taking some of these lots along with myself. But our proposal and how we're drawing up for the HOA is we're doing 50% brick fronts. We're doing 2,000 square foot ranch. The story and a half and two stories, we're back and forth on that. That hasn't yet to be 100% determined, but the homes are going to start at 350 to 375. More than likely, they're going to fall in the 450 range.
So we feel like this rezoning is pretty much in compliance with what's going on in the adjacent area as far as, we're not asking for something much more dense, like we're going for R-1D, 10,000 square foot. We have reached out to all the utility companies, mainly Public Water District Number 2. In this particular area, there is a Mason Glen lift station. The adjacent subdivision has a few lots in the very front that are on grinder pumps. Will be proposing the same. But the first four lots are going to be lower than the gravity line that comes up into the adjacent development will allow, will allow to serve those lots that are down closer to Orf Road. That's similar to what's going on in Eagle Estates right now. So it's a pretty straightforward application as far as the tree preservation. We looked at trying to save 25% of the trees, and that really came up into the back rear building lines, you know, about the rear 25 feet to save the amount of trees needed. And we're going to propose a landscape package for the homes. They'll try to, we're proposing right now 10 feet of trees, and we'd like to preserve as much as we can, but we didn't want to pinch Matt's building lot and the potential for patios. Or I know that you're not going to build structures within that 25-foot setback, but the grading to get the lots out proper for a nice patio or play area in the back of the lots, it didn't make sense to try to save 25 feet of trees. So that's our proposal. We'll come up with a landscape package with the homes that'll replace some of the trees that are outside of the tree preservation requirement. That's basically it.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? All right. Thanks, guys. Going to go ahead and open it up to the public. If anybody in the room wants to speak on this matter, you can come forward now. Come on up. Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state your name and address for the record.
Robert Merrin, 8960 Orf Road. My wife and I own the five acres west, adjacent to this five acres, same-sized property. And I guess I would just ask developer and engineering to restate and be specific about what's planned with grinder pumps or not grinder pumps on these various pieces, and what arrangements have been made with public water. Thank you.
Did you guys want to come up and address that, those questions? Mike, I mean.
Actually, could they flip on the preliminary plat since there's a specific?
Can we go to the maps again, please?
Basically.
Grinder pumps?
There's a, there you go. There's a manhole right in here. It's a gravity manhole that's within the adjacent development, and we'll be extending a sanitary sewer, gravity sewer, up into our property. Some of the lots down below in the adjacent development are below, the basement floor can't be served by this, this gravity sewer, so those are currently on grinder pumps, which was specifically pointed out to us by Public Water District Number 2 when we originally approached them about servicing this site. They actually suggested the grinder pumps for the first few lots in our development. And what I'm saying is that these first few lots that are up, haven't designed them yet. We're going to try to limit the number of lots that aren't on grinder pumps. We're thinking at least three of the, of the front lots will end up being on grinder pumps because the elevation of the basement will be below the flow line of the main once it comes into our site. And that's, we submitted this to Public Water District Number 2. They're on board. So that's basically.
Okay.
Does this have individual laterals on mine that go to the main, or how does that work?
This one's going to be a shared lateral. That's what they've got next door. It's going to be a main, basically. After two connect together, it's a main.
Okay.
Now, generally, the way it works is when, before two connect, it's private. But once you have two of them together, it's required by state law that they're, that they're.
The shared.
Maintained by the sewer district. That's why you see some of them run in parallel because they're trying to avoid.
Right.
The public maintenance of the force main.
Okay. Thanks.
Just out of curiosity, did you say 2,000 square foot ranches are going to be built in there?
That'd be the minimum.
Minimum, you said, 2,000?
The pricing's a little high when you mentioned 350 to 400,000 for.
The minimum on a ranch is 200,000, which would be that 350 price range, and then the.
2,000, yeah?
That's it.
2,000 square feet?
2,000 square feet. That's currently in Eagles, both those displays they have, Thomas and, you're blank on the other builder that's in there. One is, Steve's is 2,090. This is 495 right now, and then the general cross street is 24-something, and he is 525.
For those.
2,400 square foot.
He's all brick front, but yes.
On 10,000 square foot lot.
Now, is that compatible with the neighborhood that you're in there?
I'm sorry.
Is that compatible with the neighborhood, like the subdivision right next door to your east that's already developed, or is it being developed?
Brookfield Crossing, I know they have 300-something posted.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
And then McKelvey's up on it, not really adjacent, but it's adjacent to Eagles, the corner of it. They're in the same price range.
Okay.
Not the 500, I'm saying. They're in the mid-3s. They have a couple that went in there for like 410, 425.
Okay. Excuse me. Now, will that actually be in the written covenants, those square feet?
Yes, it's going to be in the written covenants. And we're going between 2,000 and 2,200 square feet.
And that will be in the covenants that way?
Yes, it will be in the covenants, along with the brick, you know, front or stone front, and then the story and a half and two-story, we're still going back and forth.
Great. Thanks.
Good time to build.
Thanks.
Good. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion on this matter up here? We need a motion. Oh, you want, oh, I'm sorry. I closed the public. Come on up. Sorry about that. I didn't know you wanted to speak. Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And state your name and address for the record.
William Myers, and I'm at 211 Mason Glen. Question, I had two questions for the builder or the developer. First question would be the line of trees in the back, just to confirm the amount of trees that are going to be saved. We actually live right behind that back side lot.
Okay.
So if you can pull up, we're actually, my house actually backs up to that back, I guess it would be the south line lot. So we purchased that property with Roals, thinking it was going to be a wooded lot back there for a number of years. Obviously, it's changing. We get it. We just want to know how many trees are going to be left.
Yeah, so they're, they're trying to presume 25%.
25 trees or 25 feet.
25%, but that, I don't know if they'll be able to do that.
Yeah. So can you give me a estimate about with the backyard space from your lot to ours? How much, how much tree line would be left in there?
Just to understand, you're at the bottom of the hill?
Uh-huh. Yes.
Two things. One is those all the trees back.
Guys, hold on a second. Yeah, come on up. Sorry. Yeah, is that all you needed to know?
Well, one other question was just the water flow. We're having some issues, I think, from the other development to the east of you. There's some flooding issues in our backyard with a swell.
Okay.
Just want to make sure where the flow of the water is.
We'll get the staff to answer some of that, too.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Juan. You know what? Hold on just a second. Is there anybody else who wants to speak on this matter? I didn't, I thought there was only one. Sorry about that. Go ahead. Go ahead.
To answer the question that's on the, I guess it would be the south side, which is facing you, the trees, there's, that's where most of the trees are. Some of them are already marked off. They're not in touch, obviously.
Hey, Matt, go ahead and just address us. Yeah, just address us.
They're not going to be touched. There is on the back, far left-hand corner, there's a couple of trees that are going to have to be taken out more towards the middle of that lot, just because when you get a 50-by-60-foot footprint in there, we're going to disturb and clip those, and they're going to die anyway when we put the foundation in. So some of those are going to have to come out. Also, up at the cul-de-sac in the plan that we've submitted, we have a fence, too. If you have, you know, headlights may be an issue, even though it's at your roof line across the entire back there where the cul-de-sac is, there's, we're going to have a six-foot tall fence there, so when cars are turning around, there's not a headlight issue.
Okay. Any other?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Let's bring it back before the Commission again.
I'd like to ask staff to come on off.
Yeah. So what are the, can you answer the runoff question? I know we.
I think our Development Review Division is aware that there's been some complaints, and while we were out on field inspection, they did go over to Eagle Estates, and they are investigating that, that runoff issue. Let's see, what was the other question?
That was.
What else could be from the actual development?
And then what they will do is, is they will, they will go through their, their required review to make sure that there is not any additional water added to your property. But they will check, they're going to check the grading and everything on this, on the improvement plans from this subdivision, and go back and recheck that.
Thank you. All right. Let's bring it back forth to the Commission. Any discussion on this? If not, I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve our rezoning request, RZ-17-10.
I need a second.
I second.
Mr. Setley?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Cleary?
Yes.
Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Frombo, it's yes.
Yes.
Mr. Klinghammer?
Yes.
Eight to zero. No one passes.
Do we do the plat now?
Yeah, let's do the preliminary plat. I need a motion on that now, too.
I move we approve preliminary plat 17-09.
And a second, please. Thank you. Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Staff is whispering in my ear that that needs to be subject to the rezoning, perhaps.
As a plat approval?
The plat approval.
Okay. Okay.
I'm in my motion, subject to County Council approval of the rezoning request.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Do we need to do this differently since we've already?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Cleary?
Yes.
Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm?
Says yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Klinghammer?
Yes.
And Mr. Setley? That's eight to zero. Thank you. Okay, we have some new requirements for conditional use permits that we need to read before every conditional use permit now. I think that's thanks to Mr. Ellis. I'm not sure, but something to do with his, his legal problems, or yes. So anyway, I'm going to read this before CUP 1712. It's conditional use permit applications will be heard tonight, and once the Commission makes a recommendation, the applications will be scheduled to be introduced at the Tuesday, October 10th, 2017 County Council meeting. Public comment will be taken tonight and at the County Council meeting on Tuesday, October 10th, 2017. Public comment on the applications will not be taken at any meeting of the County Council held thereafter. Wow. Okay. So CUP 17, conditional use permit on Ebert Lane. The applicant is DJM Ecological Services Incorporated. The owner is Jonathan R. Wingo and Deborah J. Wingo. Joint revocable trust agreement. The use requested is a nursery, and the property is zoned A agricultural district. The area is 7.01 acres. It's the location on the northwest terminus of Ebert Lane. It's in Council District 2. Staff?
All right. If we could switch over to the maps. All right. As you can see, this property is located at the terminus of Ebert Lane on the western side. And you'll also see on the zoning here, there is a conditional use permit that currently exists, 655. This was, was put into effect in 2005. Originally, when the applicant applied and went before the Commission, staff did recommend not approving this because of its location at the end of a private lane. It went on to County Council, and County Council did approve it. The current nursery is a wholesale-only, and it is a specialty type of nursery. Consequently, since we had recommended no approval the last time, we went back and reviewed the reasons why staff went against the recommendation. And what we found was that there have been no violations. We have had no complaints. And when the master plan was in effect at the time, it didn't, it showed it as, I believe it was still agricultural, but now it's low-density residential. So we still look at the same conditions that we, what we want to look for, make sure nobody's being harmed by this conditional use permit. And as I mentioned, there have been no complaints. The property, we did go on a site visit to the property, and from what I understand from the applicant, he's intending to expand this conditional use to the southern portion of property that he owns, that parcel also. What he would like to do is build a larger pole barn to store equipment and such in, and also, I think he's had some theft problems and things of that nature. So he'd like to clean this place up and put more inside. The same nursery type of specialty company that he does, and he can explain that in more detail, nothing there is actually changing. It's, I don't believe it's really expanding. I think it's probably grown, but, but he would like to clean the property up, build a pole barn on this adjoining parcel, and then put some of his equipment and such inside. So with that, staff does recommend approval with the following conditions, that the conditional use permit shall substantially conform to the approved concept plan. You did get a revised concept plan that did show, the first one didn't show the gravel area, some equipment, and again, he may have to explain this because this is a recent change. He mentions that he may park some equipment on there. I don't know if that's transition when he's coming back from working out in the field or if it's permanent storage. You would have to ask him that. The second is before this conditional use may be expanded, a site plan shall be submitted by the applicant and approved by St. Charles County as complying with Section 405.510E and Section 405.525 of the county code. Number three, the north side of the property must have at a minimum a Type 2 vegetated buffer along the barbed wire fence as defined by Exhibit A in Section 405.435 of the county code. Number four, the nursery must be wholesale only. Number five, the property owner shall combine the two properties under this conditional use permit into one parcel so as to comply with the minimum area and lot requirements of the A agricultural district. And number six, all storied shall be under or within a roof structure unless otherwise shown on the approved CUP concept plan, and that would be your most recent concept plan that was submitted.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Yeah, Ellie, just one real quick. Back when the original CUP was approved, it had three conditions. Have all three of those been met?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other?
Is there any length of time the conditional use permit is required to stay? I guess I'm just thinking in terms of, as you pointed out, there's a lot of low-density residential or high-density residential around there, and theoretically, I could see a highest and best use changing over a period of time, and just wondered if this is tied in any kind of timeframe.
We did not set any, any extinguishing time period on this.
Gotcha. Okay. Thanks. Any other questions? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and ask the applicant if they want to come up before us on this CUP if they're in the room. Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state your name and address for the record.
John Wingo. I live at 2205 Ebert Lane in Wentzville, Missouri.
Go ahead, John.
Basically, what we want to do is just put up a larger pole barn facility so we can improve efficiencies with our operation and have a secure facility. We haven't really had any theft problems as of yet, but just anticipating with the urbanization of the area around there, we'd like to be a little more secure. I currently own 30 acres on Ebert Lane. I live there myself, and at the initial conditional use permit hearing, just about everybody on the road came with me to recommend that I run the business out of there because I've been an asset to them as far as maintaining the road and helping out with the neighborhood. We're a pretty tight-knit, small community there on Ebert Lane with five-acre lot minimums now, and we'd, we'd like to keep it that way, and I'm of the spirit that I'm working with the neighbors to do that. It's all pretty straightforward. What we do as a business is similar to what you see at like Indian Camp Creek Park and some of the more naturalized areas that are prairie. We do prairie restoration, wetland restoration, and timber stand improvement type of work in a five-state region, so we're traveling. Vehicles not there all the time, but we do a lot of core of engineers work as well as But we do a lot of core of engineers' work, as well as now, with the advent of, you know, the pollinator crisis going on and the monarch crisis with everybody looking at possibly declaring the monarch on the endangered species list. We've really been swamped with putting in a lot of pollinator and butterfly-type habitat. So it's narrowing down to where it's not just governmentally mandated jobs that we're doing, but a lot of residential and common ground-type areas are going to the more natural approach. And so our business has grown a little bit. But like I say, I want to do this building so I can leave it to my son and have a little bit of a more organized, you know, footprint there.
Any questions for John? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to go ahead and open up to the public. Is there anybody in the room that wants to speak on this matter? Come forward now. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close it and bring it back before this commission. Any discussion on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion for the CUP seventeen twelve.
I recommend approving conditional use, CUP seventeen dash twelve, with the supposition or the, that the recommendations are followed according to what staff has recommended.
And I need a second?
Sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Cleary?
Yes.
Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm votes yes. Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Klinghammer?
Yes.
Mr. Setley?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Eight to zero. Thank you, gentlemen. Our next item before us is a concept plan, STP seventeen dash three nine. Approval of this concept plan for the extension of existing Nike plant building and eight research park drive. The applicant is Albrecci Constructors Incorporated, and the owner is Nike IHM Incorporated. Planning, or the property zoning is HTCD, High Tech Corridor District. And the property is on twenty-three point four acres. Proposed addition is seventy-two thousand two hundred and sixty square feet, and it's in Council District Two. Staff?
Yes, staff received the new concept plan from Nike and for their expansion and review.
For approval of expansion plans for a light manufacturing and assembly facility, Nike. The purpose, actually, for the expansion is very simple. They are growing their current facilities, and they wanted to update their facility. We found, of course, you've already mentioned, that it is in the High Tech Corridor. And so you're seeing now on the screen that there is the site plan for their expansion. If you would look to the north of the diagram or the plan, you will see that there is a proposed west expansion. And to the left of that, there is a chiller plant expansion. And then south, to the southwest of the property, there is a proposed south expansion. The Nike Corridor, if you'll go to the next map, we found that it is in compatibility with adjacent and surrounding uses in property. It is in the Research Park District. And to the right, the site six, right next to the lot where the Nike plant expansion would take place, is a EMD Group Biospace Facility. Also, to the west of that, we have Zotek. And then south of the property, we have a government property, which I believe is a post office. And then there's a Cold Solution. To the far west or northwest, you have the Weldon Spring Heights subdivision. And so that is the location of where our subject property is. What staff would like to recommend or have the commission to know is that under the High Tech Corridor standards, the Planning and Zoning Commission has the discretion to approve such uses to ensure that it is compatible with the surrounding areas. A historical fact is, is that the initial facility was already pre-approved. Initially, when it was built, it was built under University of Missouri Board of Trustees in the Missouri Research Park. Since February two thousand and six, it is now independent. Therefore, that's why we are reviewing the site plans for the Nike expansion project. Staff has reviewed the application, and we find that the proposed concept plan for this expansion to be in compliant with four oh five five two three in the Unified Development Ordinance. We reviewed it also. The HTC District has additional architectural requirements. So we, in lieu of the site plan that was submitted, we also reviewed that, looking at the additional architectural design standards, and find that the proposed design is in compliance with those design standards. So staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission will approve the application as compatible with the adjacent and surrounding uses and as compliant with the HTC District or the High Tech Corridor District standards. Now, if the commission decides to approve this plan, a site plan must be submitted to the county for administrative review to be approved by the Director of Division of Planning, as well as the Director of Division of Development Review per Section four zero five point five two five of the UDO.
There any letters? Were there any letters on this?
Any letters?
Yeah.
No, sir.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
Yeah, I have one. So when the site plan is submitted, with all these additional improvements, obviously, and more people working there, will the site plan, will the building to parking ratios be part of the site approval?
Yes, it will. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, let's go ahead and, if the applicant wants to come up and present the concept plan. Raise your right hand for me. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state your name and address for the record.
My name is Adnan Amerkic. I live at, or I work at One Memorial Drive, St. Louis, Missouri, six three one oh two.
And say your first name again?
Adnan.
Adnan?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
So if we can go back to the site plan, the personnel already can explain the overall design concept. The major idea here is that we are expanding on two sides, being the, and just for you guys' orientation, the north side is to the right. So if we're looking at the west expansion, that's expanding to the manufacturing floor, and that's around twenty-four thousand square feet without any mezzanines. And then the south expansion, that's going to be also manufacturing floor and some community spaces for the employees, is going to be around forty-eight thousand square feet. The addition for the chiller plant, that's going to be actually housing the equipment for the actual air conditioning and process chilled water. And it's going to be screened on two sides to prevent any noise or any of the, any noise to neighboring parcels. As part of this overall concept, we are actually, you know, providing some additional trees to make sure that all of the facility is shielded from neighboring views and updating the detention pond. We are actually expanding the parking lot. And for the most part, the building is going to match the existing exterior envelope, which is the tilt-up panel. We're going to be using precast panels, but that's essentially the same look, except it's going to just yield a better construction method for us during the winter months. That's all.
When did you guys move into the Research Park? What year was that?
I'll direct that to...
Nineteen ninety-five.
Okay. Any other questions for Adnan? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to go ahead and open up to the public. Is there anybody in the room that wants to speak on this matter? You can come forward now. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public portion of it and bring it back before the commission. Is there any discussion on this matter? And while I like that there's two people that make motions and second them, I'd like other people to do that, too, if it's possible. So Mr. Leonard was the first, Mr. Coon was the second. Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Cleary?
I, yes.
Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm votes yes. Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Klinghammer?
Yes.
Mr. Setley?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Eight to zero. Thank you, gentlemen.
Our next application is AVR seventeen dash oh one. A request to amend the Park Charles South PUD by changing the required fifty-foot minimum property line setback for an existing carport. And it's at One Creekwood Court. The applicant is Holland E. Wilcox. The property owner is Holland E. Wilcox and Tamara Wilcox, revocable living trust. The current zoning is R one E PUD, single-family residential district with a planned unit development overlay district. Requested variance to allow a front yard setback of twenty-four point five feet in lieu of the fifty feet, as required by Section four oh five dash zero nine zero dash E dash three of the ordinance of St. Charles County, Missouri. The property is approximately thirteen thousand one hundred and eighty-seven square feet, and its location is on the south corner of Creekwood Court and Creekwood Drive, it's in Council District Five.
All right, go ahead, staff. I think there's a site plan and a letter requesting variance on it. No, hold on a second. We're going to ask the staff some questions on it first, and then we'll have you come up. So go ahead, staff.
Sure. This property is in a residential subdivision, the Park Charles South, which is a single-family residential subdivision. It was plotted in nineteen seventy-four as a planned unit development. A lot of times, planning developments are mixed uses. This one is a single use, that pretty much is single-family residential. It's generally located off of St. Peters Howell Road and north of McClay Road. If you know where the ball fields are on St. Peters Howell Road, it's north of that, a couple of subdivisions.
Yeah.
So this property is on a corner lot, and detached accessory structures require a front yard setback of fifty feet. So this, this structure was built at less than that. And so the applicant is essentially requesting to allow it to stay where it is, because after the fact of building permit it was applied for, and we're unable to approve it at its current location for a couple of reasons. One is that it doesn't meet the setback. Second, it doesn't meet the material requirements. It was built with metal, and it has to be some other material other than metal, because it's, that's what the ordinances require. So the request is not to change the material. That's going to have to be dealt with regardless. But the request is to allow it to be set back instead of fifty feet from the front yard property line, twenty-four and a half feet. Now, it sounds like a variance, but technically, what it's not applying for is a variance. It's for amendment of a planned unit development. You may remember about a year ago, we did an amendment to a planning development for a front yard setback in Augusta Shores. That was a little bit different situation, because the lot sloped off so dramatically that the house was built, the house built just a few feet from the front property line. The peak of that house was below the road. I mean, that's how much the lot dropped off. And so they built it a couple of feet too far close to the front property line, and they weren't able to sell the house, because they couldn't get title insurance, because they had this encroachment. And so in that case, an amendment was made to the planning and development to allow them to encroach. So this is a little bit similar situation, except that there's not the same impediments that that property had. This is a flat property, and it's, and there's clearance, there's the ability to build back fifty feet, but the preference of the property owner is not to do so. Staff would recommend for denial for a couple of reasons, and probably the main one is that where the building sits now, the garage, it's really even with the house right next door. And also, when you're at the house directly across the street from this, and you're looking out your front window, you're looking at this metal structure that's not set back like a normal garage would be. So I think it does have an effect on the neighboring properties. But I'll let you decide whether that's grounds for approval or not approval of the, of the application.
Any questions for staff?
Yeah, I do. So what I'm not clear on is when they put in for the permit, isn't there an inspection process along the way to make sure that the footings are set in the right place and things such as that before the, in other words, at various stages along the way before it's completed?
Right. The app, the way I understand it, is the applicant applied for a permit from the highway department in order to put in the driveway, but not a building permit until after it was already constructed.
Oh, okay.
And that's, that's why we're here today, essentially.
Yeah, that's what I wasn't quite getting. Okay, thank you. Any other questions of staff? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and ask, is the applicant in the room, or is?
I believe so.
Come on up. Here's, here's a cup. Oh, she's got one. Okay. You got plenty of water now. You can bring it up to the podium. Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state your name and address for the record.
My name is Holland Wilcox. I live at number one Creekwood Court, St. Peters, Missouri, six three three seven six.
Go ahead, Holland.
Earlier, I tried to interrupt the council for a moment. I just wanted to make sure I was the last one on the docket.
You are.
Okay. That way, I thought maybe we could speak a little more freely. Again, my name, you know my name is Holland Wilcox. My occupation is, I've been working for Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District for twenty years doing capital construction projects. For the last ten years, I've been a senior construction inspector for five years. And the last five years, I've been a resident inspector, which essentially, I'm a supervisor for senior inspectors doing large capital improvement projects. Each day, I deal with survey. Each day, I deal with easement. Each day, I deal with right-of-way. I'm very, very familiar with construction projects. And having said that, I just wanted to set the tone that maybe, just maybe, I'm qualified to speak to a group of one or more with real or imagined knowledge about construction projects. This project here...
Holland, you need to state the microphone. Sorry. You can take that microphone with you if you need to do something, but...
Yes. This project...
They'll get it back. They'll turn it on. You don't need to do anything. They'll get it. Go ahead.
Hello?
Can you guys turn that portable mic on back there?
There he comes.
Okay. Must not be working. Sorry. She's going to come out and get it on for you.
Hello? Hello?
So Holland, I mean, before you go into all that, why don't you come back before us, and let the commission ask some questions of you first?
Sure, sure.
I mean, it sounds like you're pretty knowledgeable.
Yes.
But I'd like the commission to ask you questions, because you might go into a lot more detail than we need to make a decision.
Probably so.
So can you tell us, just for my purpose, how did you build it without the permits? Did you, the highway department gave you permission to put the driveway in?
Well, the eight-hundred-pound gorilla in the room is, that structure is exactly where the planning and zoning department told me where to put it.
Here?
Here.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Did they have?
This project started...
Holland?
Prior to you building it?
Pardon me?
Prior to you building it?
Prior to me building it.
And did they know how you were building it?
Yes.
Okay. And they knew where it was on the property?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Okay. This started a year and a half ago. Okay, I signed the concrete contract on May fifth, two thousand and sixteen. I signed the carport contract on May eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Approximately a few days before that, I called the St. Charles County Highway Department right-of-way to find out about the right-of-way for the aprons and everything on the driveway and the concrete work. I believe the same day, I called the planning and zoning department across at St. Charles and told, I got ahold of a female in your zoning department, and I explained in detail what I wanted to do. And I said, what does my setback need to be? And she said, well, Mr. Wilcox, as you know, you have a corner lot, which makes the whole corner lot a front yard. corner lot a front yard. Your house has a 50-foot setback. You're putting up a," I told her, "10-by-25-foot steel carport." She says, "Your setback could be the same as your front yard, even though it's going in the rear." She goes, "You need to measure 50-foot from the center of the street and put it 50-foot back, just like even with the edge of your house and the edge of your neighbor's house, so when they back out, they can look left and right, and there's no impeding, there's nothing to impede their obstruction or their view for traffic." I said, "I'll do you one better. I'll put it back 51 feet." Because I work in survey, and I've had spots where if I'm a foot off, it's cost me $10,000 because I had to pay somebody for the easement.
Okay, so I think we kind of know what you're going at.
Okay.
I want to know, did you contact the property owner behind you, and are they okay with where it is? Because I drove down there.
The property owner behind me is extremely, I have great relationships with everyone.
They're not here, so I would assume.
No, I'm the guy that, when it snows, I, all the widows, I go and shovel their driveways for free. I have very, very good relationships in my neighborhood. We have one neighbor in our neighborhood that has taken approximately upon themselves to police up one-fourth of the houses randomly in our neighborhood for the last several years and turned them into building and code inspection.
And so, we do have a letter of opposition. It's anonymous, which...
And I don't doubt that at all, because you can go in our neighborhood, and somebody will be parked in their front yard, another house will have trash all over it, and then three or four of us are singled out for the minor infractions. And we, I do not want to know who it is, because I love our neighborhood. I love the people in it, and I don't want to have a bad feeling whenever I drive into the neighborhood.
Okay.
So, but we do have a problem neighbor there. But I've talked to Jim Veach in building codes. We're unincorporated there, and Jim doesn't like to write people up, but he's put in this situation because of this particular neighbor.
Okay. So, Holland, is any other commission having a question for him?
I guess I'm having a real hard time following this. How could you possibly put this thing up the way I'm thinking without a permit?
There's the million-dollar question right there, is whenever I got my contractors, I know they have to be, have the permits. So, I got GNP Contracting, which was St. Peter's number-one concrete contractor for the year, and the first question out of my mouth is, "Are you going to pull the construction contract for this project?" He goes, "Yes." I called All Steel Carports, who had the carport, and I told them, "Are you going to pull the building permit for this project?" They said, "Certainly. Our team travels all over the Midwest, and whenever they get into town, they will pull the building permit." They gave me a one-week timeframe for putting up the carport. I go to work, they have a team comes in, puts up the carport. I come home, and the carport's done, and they're getting ready to leave in a pickup truck. And I went up, it's a Hispanic crew. I said, "Did you pull the building permit?" And he says, "Si, senor," and drives away. I hear nothing else about permits for several months, and then Jim Veach calls me up and says, "Hey, the building permit was not pulled." So, instantly, I applied for a building permit. And they told me, "Well, you have metal sides and metal gables, which do not fit the code." I said, "I'll change it. I'll take it down." Then they wouldn't, while they were working with the building permit, somebody from zoning comes in and discovers that, "Hey, we're out of zone." And this has been going on for over a year now.
Yeah.
So, I've been in zoning commission. I've had private meetings with zoning, and they had me send letters out to everybody in the neighborhood. And I'm a municipal employee.
So, Holland, I think we got what's going on.
Okay.
Yeah, so, does anybody have any other questions for Holland on this? I think we kind of know what's going on. At least, we're going to ask staff about it, so...
Well, I am curious how you determined what the center line of the right-of-way was.
What the center line was?
Yeah, how you determined that.
I went and measured curve-to-curve on the street.
Okay. I mean, you are aware that right of streets aren't necessarily always centered, aren't you?
Right, but this was from the Planning and Zoning Commission. It said, "Center line of the street back to the house is a 50-foot setback." So, I went...
So, you asked the planning?
So, someone from the planning zoning told you?
Yes. Very, very concise questions.
Okay, all right.
I want to, I have, I have a $40,000, I have almost $60,000 in this project.
Wow.
And certainly, before I signed the contract, with my background, I would ask these questions, certainly. And I have, I even petitioned AT&amp;T for the phone records, okay? And the phone, I signed the contract on the 5th of May, and the phone records only go back to May, so I had to file a claim with them, and they're sending me three months of phone records from my personal phone that will show in April or the end of May that I called the Planning and Zoning Office, had a lengthy conversation.
It's fine. I believe that you called.
Thank you.
We believe that you called.
Because when I tell people...
You're telling us you called. You're under oath right now, so I'm going to believe and take you to word.
Well, people have been looking at me like I have three heads across the street.
So, give us an opportunity to bring this to our staff.
Yes.
We want to ask them the questions.
Certainly.
So, if you want to sit down, you can.
So, you really knew when that structure was completed, that you still didn't have any permits for it? I mean, you knew that, right?
No. Whenever I talked, whenever I talked to the concrete guy, he told me, "I'm pulling, I'm pulling a permit." That was the first thing I asked him before, when we signed the contract. I said, "Who's going to pull the permit, me or you?" And he goes, "I'll pull, I'm pulling all the permits." When I talked to American Steel Carport at their national office, they said their team travels through the Midwest. When they come to town, they will pull the building permit. And I said, "That's fine." I deal with building permits every single day.
Can you go after them?
I've tried, and I'm getting the same runaround, like, "We don't know who you talk to. The person that was the foreman no longer works here," and everything. But the building and code enforcement, they told me they wanted different sides. I said, "No problem." I can't even get, I've applied for the building permit, and I even got sent to court for not having a building permit that I applied for, and the judge threw it out. And this has been just a total nightmare.
Yeah, we understand.
Yeah.
Okay. Give us an opportunity.
Okay, thank you. But I would appreciate...
I don't know if they're going to remember any of this or not, so we're still going to take a, but I'm going to ask them some questions.
Well, I haven't, I haven't mentioned any names.
It's fine.
And I don't want to.
It's fine.
Because I'm a government employee, and I don't think you gain anything by throwing people under the bus.
I agree.
Okay? I'm here to help the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Okay. All right, so, does anybody have any questions of staff on this? Do you want, I mean, I don't, you know, he's testifying that he called and was told it was okay to do these things. I guess we have to address the elephant in the room on this one.
That's what permits are for. I mean, they're to make sure that the setbacks are correct and that there's no misunderstanding about where it's supposed to go. And so, when it's constructed, then the inspector can go out in the field and ensure that it was built as it was supposed to be built.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the whole purpose of permits. So, permits weren't taken out in this case.
By the cement guy or by the builder?
Right, that we have record of.
The cement guy pulled the permit.
Yeah, but he pulled it after he did the concrete.
That's true, right. There was a permit taken out for the special-use permit to build the driveway.
Right.
I talked to Highway Department, and we worked, we did confirm that.
Yeah, it's the structure on the driveway that's the problem right now?
Correct, the setback, and also the building materials.
Yeah.
Now, I have no reason to disbelieve that the applicant spoke to...
Sure.
...one or more people in, at the county, or even planning and zoning. I don't have any reason to not believe that.
Right.
Why this, this is understanding about what the setback was, I can't answer that question. I'm not sure. Now, to, only a property owner will know where the property lines are. We can't tell someone where they are, except for that, sometimes we can tell people that as a general rule, if you go to the center of a street and you measure back half the width of the right-of-way, more or less, that's where to start searching for your property pins. But that's only going to be, give you in the ballpark. And really, it's the property corner pins that are going to tell you where the property lines are. I can't tell someone where their property boundaries are. I mean, a surveyor can, and the property pins can, but anyway.
I have a good question.
Yeah.
The permit that the concrete company pulled, was it for the driveway only, or the driveway and the pad for the garage?
It would be that portion that was in the right-of-way. So, it would be the portion from the front property line within the, out to the street. So, that would be what a special-use permit would be for.
Okay, so, that was just that small section, not the drive and the pad?
Right, right. Yeah, I don't think there's a requirement just to pour concrete. If you're putting in a concrete driveway outside of the, outside of the right-of-way, I don't think there's a requirement that you get a permit to pour concrete.
Is there any kind of requirement when there's additions to have some sort of boundary survey to determine the property lines? Seems like that would be something that we'd want to do in general.
Right, we always advise applicants to know where the property lines are, to know where the pins are, or have a surveyor verify where the property lines are. And it does get really tricky, especially with fences. So, we do this a lot about, we warn people that they need to know where the property lines are, because if they end up building something across on their neighbor's property, it really comes back to them for their liability.
Yeah. Mr. Setley, you had a question?
Yeah, I had a question. This is presented to us as an amendment to this PUD. Is that specific to the whole PUD, or just one piece?
It would just be for this one property. Yeah.
Thank you.
So, is the, is the building structure not far enough back, or?
Right, it's, yeah, it's not far enough back for, it should be, normally, it should be an accessory structure. It's got to be at least 50 feet back from the front property line.
Okay.
And it sits back about 24 and 1/2 feet. And so, he's requesting to allow that to remain where it is. So, I guess your task is to determine whether or not there seems to be, whether or not that's okay in the big picture. I mean, does it have an effect on the neighbors of the neighborhood? Is there a benefit to doing so? And in this case, it would be a recommendation to the county council, so the county council would make the...
I thought he said he was 51 feet.
From the center line of the road?
Yeah.
Not from...
Yeah, he's testified that he built it 51 feet from the center line of the street.
It should have been 50 feet from the property.
Property line, yeah.
Now, if it was back 50 feet...
Would it fit?
Would it fit?
Yeah. I couldn't tell on, when I drove by, how much...
You know, as best I can tell, there's room in the back to build it at 50 feet.
Right.
So, how far off is he?
25 feet.
Yeah.
Here we're taking.
Yep. Okay. Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I had another one. Like Craig went out there and looked at this one, and I just had perused it first, and I thought the whole issue really was going to be how close it was to the neighbor's house.
Yeah.
How, how far from the property line, rear property line, can you build a structure like this?
I think it's seven feet.
Seven feet? Okay.
Right, yeah, if it's a detached accessory structure, smaller than next number, I'm sorry, detached accessory structure is seven feet.
Big lot, so it'd be a hard time fitting.
So, I mean, I kind of looked at, I didn't see where it really, the only neighbor that I saw that it would really affect is the backyard, the, the next door, yeah, the, around the corner from me. So, I mean, I see how it happened. It's not good. I, I'm a little bit surprised that putting $60,000 into any structure, that you didn't have it surveyed. That, that's the only part about all this that I'm just having a hard time wrapping my head around, was that there's no, you didn't have a survey done.
Well, I was told... Come on up to the microphone. Thank you.
I'm very familiar with survey. I survey myself. I was told by your employee, 50-foot setback from the center of the street.
Yeah, so, there's, there's somebody that told you that.
I can read a tape measure.
That's what he's saying, that's what happened. But he didn't, he should have pulled permits. That's what permits are about. Regardless of what a staff member tells you, sometimes they misspeak, and they don't speak the crap. And some people misinterpret what they're saying, too.
Sure.
I'm not going to get into that. We're not going to get into that here on the commission.
But what I'm saying is, I put it, there's a reason why it's 51 feet and not 50 feet back, is because I give myself a one-foot cushion.
I know our staff pretty well, though, and I, I have a hard time, I'm not going to say that you didn't hear that. I don't, not sure that they, that they said that.
That's what I mean.
I don't think, they didn't really say...
I was also told...
They know the rules pretty well.
I was also told by your staff that the person I might have talked to would have been let go last January.
Okay. Well, that's fine. Again, we're not going to get into that.
That's why I wanted to wait till the last day. Some of this is kind of embarrassing, you know, for maybe possibly your office. This is certainly putting a lot of hardship on me. This would be very easy for the council to say, "Pour another 10-by-25-foot pad behind it. Call All Steel Carport and have them cut it off this pad, take it apart, reassemble it, and put it back, and I'm stuck with a 10-by-25-foot 6-inch fiber mesh with rebar in it that I've already paid for, that I'm not going to be using."
Yeah.
And...
And Holland, so we sympathize with what you're going through, but there are permits that needed to be pulled. Your contractor didn't do it. They didn't do their job.
Mm-hmm.
Your concrete person, I don't care if he pulled a permit, he didn't do what was supposed to be done. He should have known that. If these are construction people, they should have done their job, too. So, they didn't, they didn't do what they should have done for you, too. So, there's enough blame to go around on this thing. Again, we're going to try to discuss that up here and come to something that's reasonable. This is still going to go before the county council, regardless of what we do.
Okay.
And they may vote you down on this regardless, so just keep that in mind. You've got to remember that, too.
So, were you aware that the architect actually had had to meet what was in the subdivision when you put the steel siding on it?
No.
No, he was counting on his contractor to do those things for him. They said they were going to do it.
They said they were going to pull the building permit, and...
No, I thought with his experience that he may have...
No, I can drive, I can drive all over St. Charles and see carports with metal sides on them, and what they, they've already been grandfathered in. Only about a year ago, did they decide that, hey, you can't do it because of hardship. This is just a recent ruling that you can't have steel sides on a carport. All over St. Charles, there's carports at people's houses with steel sides.
Yeah. Okay, well, I think we're going to be right before this commission to talk about it. No other questions for Holland? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate anybody's consideration.
We got you.
Yeah.
So, any discussion on this, gentlemen? If not, I'm going to ask for a motion, either to approve or to not approve.
Yeah, you can't put one there.
Oh, that's true. Yeah, it is going to be. So, I need a motion on this to approve.
I move to approve AVR 17-01.
And a second, please.
I will second.
Thank you. Mr. Clary?
Yes, I, I think, though, I would like to have an understanding here. If we approve it, does that mean that the steel siding is then part of it, or does that still have to be removed? That's what I'm not clear on.
the, this to be overturned by the county council and that's October the 10th, I think is what it was, wasn't it? Yeah, I don't, I don't have my notes in front of me, I'm sorry.
Tuesday after Columbus.
Yeah, okay, so that'd be, that's the 10th. Okay, thank you.
Can I have a closing statement?
No, you can't do that, I'm sorry. You've, you've got an opportunity to go before the county council, that's what you need to do. Okay, approval, well, yeah, approval of the minutes from the August 16, 2017 regular meeting.
Still moved.
Approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.[1702.63]